Yay. Sebastian, what's your last name? Christ? Kreitz. Sebastian Kreitz. Kreitz. Sebastian Kreitz. I have a little bit of a weird ear. I get many things wrong, but thank you so much. That was great. All right. So now we are going to move on to the agenda here. So what I would like to do now is take roll call. Ask our city clerk, Ms. Barr, to take roll call for us.
Councilmember Lowe. Councilmember Gurney.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wellender.
Here.
Councilmember Dean.
Here.
Mayor Farar Rivas.
Here.
Thank you.
As there was no closed session, there's no report on the closed session. Before we say anything, I just want to say this is new art. It's lovely. Of course, we know this is fashion trashin'. We have real fashion trashin' on the, our ladies in the back, and also photos of trashin' fashion. So we do this every, approximately every quarter, we change it up, and we are, work with the community center in being able to do that. So next, I would ask the council if they have any changes they would like to make to the agenda. All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve our agenda. Second.
Thank you. And we will, all those approved? All those say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Sometimes we do those easy ones, just so that we're not having to waste time going across. So do we have any meeting dedications this evening? Oh, great. So Councilwoman Sandra Lowe has a meeting dedication?
Yes. Last week, former state Senator John Burton passed away. John represented a portion of the valley when he was in the state senate. I was very close to Senator Burton. He was one of the first people that helped me when I wanted to run for school board, and there's a funny story about that one day. Anyway, he was kind of a cantankerous old guy, but heart of absolute gold, and I'll miss him tremendously. He will be lying in state in San Francisco City Hall on Friday for those who'd like to pay their respects from 8 until noon. And I would like very much to dedicate the meeting in memory of Senator John Burton. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And generally, you know, I like to do that before we do public comment, just so we're including public comment as part of the whole meeting to be dedicated to whoever's, we have a dedication for. But thank you very much. I'm very glad that you brought that up. So just in regards to comments from the public, we were going to open this up for public comment, and this is a period when you can make comments of items that are not on the agenda. We take, during the public comment period, we take 10 people at the beginning of the meeting. We ask everybody to keep their comments to two minutes. And then, if there are more than 10 people that want to comment, we will continue the public comment period at the end of the meeting. So, yes, so thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Janet Boyle, and I'm a resident of Sonoma. I am here tonight on behalf of 824 petition signers, which is nearly 1 in 5, or 20% of the voters, who supported councilmembers Lowe and Ding in the last election. So these are your constituents, and they are deeply concerned. Our central question is simple. Why change the land use for all 22 acres of the Spaschiani property when it is not required? On September 15th, Ms. Gates confirmed that the 2023 housing element already meets the city's housing need through 2031. Even the property owner, Foley Family Wines, has not requested the land use description that is currently drafted, and that was confirmed by JJ during a meeting we had with him on August 24th. So why are we proactively making such a sweeping change, one that could add 500 or more housing units, significantly increasing traffic and strains services, when there is no mandate to do so? For perspective, Sonoma currently has fewer than 6,000 housing units. That's my research, so I could be wrong. Adding 500 more would represent a 9% increase to this little town. 9%. Statewide data makes this even clearer. The governor's 2025-2026 budget summary notes, which are public, notes that three consecutive years of population decline, with growth slowing for over a decade. Therefore, why guess at what a housing demand may, that, guess at a housing demand that may never come? So again, the question was asked 230 days ago, January 30th, 2025, at the Vintage House, and it's still unclear and unanswered. Who's asking for this? It's not the residents, it's not the voters, and it's not the property owner. The council has the authority to adjust land use definitions before adoptions. On behalf of hundreds of engaged and concerned residents, I urge you, do not change the land use for all 22 acres. Observe the agricultural parcels, and if necessary, limit others to low-density residential.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for your comments. Yes.
Good afternoon, council members and staff. My name is Lynn Marie DeVincent. I'm a city resident of the Pueblo Serena Mobile Home Park. And I'm here today as a representative of the Tri-Park Committee. So who is the Tri-Park Committee? The three mobile home parks within the city limits. Pueblo Serena is one. It's a seniors-only park of 127 homes. There's Deanzamoon Valley, which is an all-age family park of 225 homes, and Sonoma Oaks over by Maxwell Village. This is a hybrid park of 50 market-rate rentals and 50 homes individually owned by homeowners. This is over 1,000 residents, mostly working families, seniors and veterans. And these three parks are under the city's rent stabilization ordinance, which is administered by the City of Sonoma and the City Council. Today, we are bringing forward a new campaign. These three parks are also under another city ordinance called the Closure and Conversion Ordinance, which applies to policy zoning and municipal code. We initially presented before the Planning Commission in June. And we have much support for this, and we hope you'll support us also. And I would like to ask all our neighbors who are here to raise their hands. These are all the folks who have showed up tonight in support of our campaign. And may it be noted in the record that that's 20-plus folks who are here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the show of hands. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Kyle. I'm the president of Sonoma County Mobile Home Owners Association and a resident of the Pueblo Serena, Pueblo Serena, one of Sonoma's three mobile home parks. I'm here to speak to you about the update to Sonoma's Mobile Home Closure and Conversion Ordinance. Across Sonoma County, mobile homeowners are attacking affordable housing. They are threatening to close parks and using that threat to force rent increases far above what local rent control allows. This is extortion. Pay more, or lose your home. Sonoma has seen this before in 2017 in response to, in response to a threat of a huge rent hike. Homeowners worked with the council to strengthen our rent control, our rent stabilization ordinance. This gave Sonoma the most advanced protections in all of California. Because of that, 10% of our residents have enjoyed housing security, and Sonoma has preserved a critical part of its housing stock. That's affordable housing stock, a rare commodity. But our Closure and Conversion Ordinance is from 2004. It's outdated and leaves us exposed. In 2020, the state passed AB 2782, giving cities expanded authority to act. Sonoma's housing element also makes the update a priority. Revision has already been drafted and submitted to the community development. In the coming weeks, we'll be making appointments with each of you to talk about the background and the details. It's scheduled to become, to come before this council in November. Adopting this measure will protect Sonoma families and protect our limited supply of affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Ann Colachitas, Pueblo Serena. Esteemed council and staff. My name is Ann Colachitas, I said that. And I serve as president of Sonoma Valley GSOMOL Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League. In 2020, I worked on AB 2782, and it was the very first bill signed by Governor Newsom that year. Even in the midst of the pandemic, lawmakers recognized the urgent need to strengthen protections around park closures and conversion. The bill must, the bill added key state-level safeguards, but it also made clear that the strongest protections must come from local governments dealing with local conditions. Sonoma's current ordinance dates back to 2004, when most parks were still owned by local mom-and-pop operators. Since then, housing affordability landscape has changed dramatically, and mobile home parks have become prime investment targets for national corporate owners and private equity investors. Sonoma County is now known as ground zero for retaliatory park closure threats. New owners have brought chaos to Petaluma, Santa Rosa, Catati, and now Windsor with multiple rent arbitrations in which they fail to ever make their case. Even with the automatic rent increases, they threaten park closure to extort the sky-high rents that will satisfy their investors. As homeowners, we are substantially invested, co-investors in our parks. Our property rights are recognized by the California Supreme Court and federal appellate courts. To protect those rights and the security of our housing, we must approach local government to update our protections every decade or so to keep pace with changing trends. The draft ordinance that we submitted will serve us well in the years ahead, protecting homeowners and the city of Sonoma. When I see what's happening just down the road, I'm relieved it hasn't happened here yet. But it could happen. It could already be underway, and we would...
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much.
It's kind of close. Okay. Hi, I'm Josette Bruce Iker, 1110 Lomwood Court. Truth, it can be very small as acknowledging that a few homeless people in the springs need our help, not our criticism. Or in the middle, like 300 people losing their life savings to someone's greed in realizing they need our help and the government awareness and change, so that it does not happen again. Or as big as knowing gun laws have to change to save lives, or that we cannot support endless wars against helpless populations or endlessly ignoring the slow death of our planet and species other than ourselves. You are our elected officials. You have an obligation to listen to us and acknowledge truth, no matter how big or how small you perceive that truth to be. And tonight, hearing these residents, it's kind of interesting that I wrote this, because I see what they're saying is a truth. I know. Many of my friends live in those parks. And thank you so much for listening today.
Thank you.
Hello there. Sorry. Hello, I'm John Lowe. I want to ask respectfully that you guys look at the reason for shutting down virtual comments via Zoom and potentially reinstate those. There's a lot of people who are unable to commute to these events and what the reasoning was behind shutting down Zoom comments in the past. I think we need to examine whether or not that was actually the right thing to do. A lot of voices are being silenced, and people can't come across the county or the city in this matter to make their opinions or express themselves in this forum. I think that should be open for, this sort of communication should be available for every citizen, not just a demographic that is, you know, overrepresented here, for instance. We don't have younger groups making it to these events, because you can't take time out of your day to do this stuff. There's kind of an overrepresentation of a group, and we won't call that supremacy, but in civics, we don't have younger generations' voices. I think it's important to consider what we did when we shut down virtual comments and examine whether or not we should be the ones who decide what speech is allowed and what is not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Caitlin Cornwall, and I am here representing Sonoma Valley Collaborative. Okay. Sonoma Valley Collaborative is a coalition of about 30 organizations representing the broadest possible array of interests in Sonoma Valley. And I'm just here to back up what the folks were saying about mobile home protections. Sonoma Valley Collaborative has actually had a priority for years that if we want to preserve housing affordability and make it better in Sonoma Valley, which we have a long way to go on that, one of the essential parts of that work has to be protecting mobile home parks and mobile home residents, because it's, they're about 10% of the population of the valley. And mobile homes are some of the last remaining housing that is affordable without subsidy. And it's really essential that we protect that. So we're working with these folks on the draft ordinance that is before you, and we will be talking to more about that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment? All right. Seeing none, I am closing the public comment period. And we're moving on to the agenda and asking the council members for any of their... Oh, just before, before we go there, I just wanted to ask you, City Manager Guin, if you had any comments that you wanted to make in regards to some of the work that's being done about the mobile, mobile home issue.
Yes, I can just let you, the council, know and the public know that we are working on an item to bring the city council for direction on this issue in November. So we will bring that back to you, and we'll have that scheduled and online for everyone to see prior to that meeting.
Thank you very much. All right. So moving on to council members' comments and remarks and reports. Does anybody have a comment or a report? Yes. Vice Mayor Wellender.
Thank you. I do have one report. I had the chance to attend the North Bay Watershed Association last Friday, and it was held at the sanitary facility in Napa. And I, I believe that as long as you're breathing, you're a student. And I learned at that event that they have some pretty impressive pipe-replacing processes that I was not aware of. And I will not bore you with all the details, but there is a system out there that allows you to take a deflated pipe that's resin-based, and you kind of pull it through the old pipe, and then you send a ultraviolet light through, and it basically inflates and cures that pipe within the old pipe. So it, in essence, is trenchless. So that was my takeaway that I was anxious to share with my fellow councilpeople.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes. Councilwoman Lowe.
Yes, I attended the SCTCA, which is the Sonoma County Transit and Climate Authority, I believe is the correct... They keep changing the acronym on me, and I'm acronym-averse. Anyway, it was a very, very interesting meeting where we looked at all of the potential funded improvements within the county, including in the Sonoma Valley. And I know that they'll be coming back to the city for some fine-tuning on that. But I just wanted to share that there was one item that had to do with climate change and sort of what the goals would be in order to get us to a more sustainable future. And it was a very interesting discussion, because a lot of the comments were about, well, what about my house? It's, you know, built in the '30s or the '60s, like my house is. And how much would it cost for me to have to go in and change all these things, et cetera, et cetera? So it was, it was a very spirited discussion, and I think that everybody recognized that it can't be on the individual owner to be able to change everything to meet the standards. But certainly, we can look to, you know, new construction and the future. And in a conversation, if you don't mind me sharing, I had with the city manager, you know, he pointed out to me that, you know, usage of water and other things that in new construction are, they've already got all the fixes. Everything goes pretty smoothly. It is in, in the, you know, older homes and so forth. So anyway, it was a very interesting conversation, and I just wanted you to know that, especially people who, you know, I think, I look around Sonoma, I live in older homes, you know, that we can't expect that everything is going to be done, you know, out of our own pocket. Then we're going to need resources from the state and the federal government, whatever, if we're ever going to meet these very important lofty goals, but very difficult to achieve. So I wanted to just share that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes. Councilmember Ding.
Yeah. Last month, I was attending Zero Waste Sonoma, and we passed proposal for the technical and the support for the disposable and the food and the services. That is focused on the education and the container-wide. And also, we approved agreement between Sonoma and the county Waste Management Authority and Conservation and the COPS. That is a good partnership between a nonprofit and a county. The both of the two major items have been approved unanimously. That is my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So I have one report. I attended last week the mayor and city council meeting in Petaluma. This was the month for just the mayors and not the mayors and city councils together. But we received a report from Joanna Pon, and she is the Foster and Homeless Youth Education Services Coordinator for Sonoma County Office of Education. And so I'm not going to go through it all, but it was just very educational in regards to the level of chances of homelessness for foster children and the number, the percentage of young people that are going to school and are homeless. And a good in-depth look at kind of, there's a number of different agencies that track homelessness. I'm sure Vice Mayor Wellender knows a lot more about this than I do. But, but just there is some discrepancies in what people consider to be homeless. And, you know, so in, in, one agency includes a young person that is basically, you know, going from house to house and, you know, sleeping on someone's couch where, or if someone's living in a car or not. So, you know, the, the numbers, as you see numbers of homelessness, sometimes they may be different. You'll see different numbers, and you'll go, wow, I just heard this, and now I'm hearing this. But how you actually count that, and, and this, Sonoma County really looks at the full extent and the full different levels where someone should be, could be considered to be unhoused. Excuse me. Unhoused. So that was, it was a very informative meeting. I learned a lot about it, and that was, that, it was very helpful. Thank you very much. And at this point, we will move on to the next agenda item, and we're asked for comments from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of items for you tonight. First, we will be starting our tree inventory effort of the city on October 1st. So you may see individuals walking around town with little GPS devices and iPads and other things to collect an inventory of all of our trees that will be used in a lot of projects and studies moving forward to address tree canopy, tree plantings, focus on projects. So we're excited about that. Second, we have our treasure artist nominations, which are now open. It seems like we were just here, and we can see a good example of our current treasure artist in this room today. The deadline is October 31st. So if you have a nomination for next year's treasure artist, please submit it to us. You can go on our website and get information about how to submit that information to us. Third, we have a cemetery cleanup this weekend on Saturday at Valley. So if you are around in town and want to join us at one of our cemeteries for a cemetery cleanup, we'd love to have you out there. It's from 8 to 2. You can come for the whole thing, part of it, as much as you want. We'd love anybody, any help that you can give. And we will be moving through our cemeteries over the next few months into our mountain cemetery and veteran cemetery over the next couple of months. Just as another reminder, the general plan elements, we have, currently have four out that are, we're looking for comments and feedback on. There's the local economy, noise, circulation, and conservation of open space. They're on our website. If you have comments or would like to provide comments on those, we'd like to have those by this Friday. So if you go to our website, there's more information about that. That way, we can start to incorporate those comments into the draft version that we can then send out. So please visit our website, the general plan, if you're interested in that. And it is that time of year for, I know there's mosquitoes and things out there, so just be aware. It's important to make sure that, if you have any standing water items, to make sure that those are emptied and removed, to make sure that you don't have any emptying areas. And then finally, just as a reminder, we do have, our next city council meeting is on September 29th, which is a Monday, not our typical Wednesday night. So just a reminder.
Always a good reminder.
Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me, sir. We are no longer in the middle of public comment. So could you please take a seat? Yes, I'm talking to you, and I'm, I, I would...
What does your name happen to be?
This is no longer the period for public comment.
What does your name happen to be?
My name is Patricia Farar Rivas, and I am the mayor. And I'm asking you to not be disrupting at this point...
I'm not trying to disrupt. I'm just trying to stand here.
Well, would you please sit down? It's, people cannot see what's going on up here with you standing there, and it's a little disconcerting when someone's standing in the middle of the room.
Are you saying based on my gender that I can't stand here?
Has nothing to do with anything other than the fact that you are a person standing in the middle of the room.
Madam Mayor, why don't we just move, move on with the agenda?
All right.
At this point, there's, I think we're okay to proceed.
All right. All right. So next, we are going to do, go, move into our city attorney comments.
I have no report this evening.
Oh, thank you very much. And then now, we are going to move on to a celebratory note. And so we do, often, we will... Often, we do celebrations of people in our community or organizations in our community. And tonight, we are celebrating someone that I think everybody knows in our community and has been celebrated before, but it's important to celebrate him again. And we're going to... We're doing a presentation of a... Okay. Sir, you are now disrupting the meeting.
The chief is talking to me. Patricia, shut up.
All right. So moving on with our celebration. So we're going to present a certificate of recognition in honor of William Bill Lynch. And as we, we can celebrate Bill many, many, many times. He's an exciting person to celebrate. But the other thing, so we're giving this to, I, Patricia Farar Rivas, mayor of the city of Sonoma, do hereby proclaim today, September 17th, 2025, as William Bill Lynch Day in the city. Your many contributions to our community are recognized and greatly appreciated. And I will present this plaque to you today. If you would like to come up, I can give the plaque to you. Sorry. We have another celebration today. It is also Bill's birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Bill. Happy birthday to you.
Just one thing. I, I think the thanks really go to you all in the city council and all the people that have, that work here and have to go through this evening so often. It can be, as we've seen, tedious at times. And really, thank you for the service you do for all of us. Thank you.
And we will miss all of your articles in the newspaper, Bill. Greatly. Bill is retiring now. So did anybody else want to make any other comments? Yes.
So when I first came to Sonoma, Bill was the editor of the local paper. And as the new police chief, we met often. And we would talk about different elements... And we would talk about different elements of, of the newspaper in relationship to public safety. And we had a lot of great philosophical question, or conversations, I should say. And, and Bill always, always wanted to be a detective. And, and it came out in some of his work as, as the editor. And, and of course, his father was here, his publisher, I believe. And anyway, it just, the family has been so incredibly generous to the community. And, and Bill, your presence will be missed in so many ways. But I know where you live and we'll make sure you stay involved.
And we wouldn't let you go anywhere, so congratulations. Anybody else want to make a comment? Good, well, thank you so much for your years of service.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, and now we also have, oh, great, it's, that's, oh, his entourage. It's lovely. Oh, good, the birthday party. So now we also have a proclamation designating September 15th through October 15th, so we're two days late, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Sonoma. And I'm going to read the proclamation and then I'm going to ask Sandy Sanchez of La Luz to come up and receive it. So whereas the city of Sonoma recognizes Hispanic Heritage Month by honoring the histories, cultures, and contributions of community members whose ancestors come from Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America, and whereas the city of Sonoma is committed to continue building a welcoming and neighborly community embracing diversity and fostering equity for every resident. And more, more than 15% of the city of Sonoma's populations identifies as Hispanic or Latin America. Spanish is the second most spoken language in the community and over 50% of the student population of Sonoma Valley High School is Hispanic. More than 60 million people in the United States identify as Hispanic or Latin America, representing over 18% of the population nationwide. Latin Americans continue to enrich our nation's character, shape our common future, and strengthen America's promise. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month, whose roots go back to 1968, begins each year on September 15th, the anniversary of independence of five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. And whereas Mexico and Chile also celebrate their independence during Hispanic Heritage Month on September 16th and September 18th, respectively. National Hispanic Heritage Month is observed from September 15th to October 15th. I think I said that before, but it's another whereas. So to recognize the contributions made by Hispanic and Latin Americans in the United States and celebrate their heritage and culture. So we are, we are working to foster a welcoming environment for all individuals, regardless of race, ethnicity, or place of origin. Our community is enhanced by these, by the, the individuals, the diversity of the individuals in Sonoma. It creates economic growth, global competitiveness, and overall prosperity for current and future generations. So I hereby, Patricia Fararivis, Mayor of Sonoma, along with the city council members, proclaim Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Sonoma and encourage Sonomas to participate in this special event however you can. Thank you, and I will bring this up to you.
Sorry to have my back to you all. I will keep it short and sweet, but on behalf of La Luz Center and all proud Latinos, thank you for this Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. This recognition honors the vibrant contributions of our Latino community, contributions that strengthen the cultural, social, and economic fabric of our city every day. Hispanic Heritage Month isn't just about honoring the past. It's about celebrating our culture, our roots, and the stories that unite us all. It's a time to honor the resilience, the heart, and hope our community brings. We celebrate not only today, but every day, the millions of Latinos who have profoundly shaped, inspired, and enriched this nation and our very own Sonoma Valley. So may we continue to work together to uplift, empower, and celebrate the voices of all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, great, go ahead. Yes, Councilmember Ding.
I would like to say in the thank you, Sandy. And since I worked with the, on the La Luz and many, many years ago, now we work together and later on, we work together in SOS and the board. So you always have the voice and the representation. Not only the voice to represent, stronger voice and the representation. I'm so grateful for you and also you are growing every year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, now moving, moving on, although we, I could do the celebration. This would be good, a combination of the Bill Lynch and the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration? Could start with margaritas. Anyway, so moving on, so now, great, we're very thankful. We're going to have a presentation of the current Pacific Gas and Electric Activities, PG&E's activities and initiatives. And I would like to welcome Jason Tardino, who's with the Local Government Affairs Office of PG&E.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm Jason Tardino. I'm your local government affairs person for the city of Sonoma, for Sonoma County and Lake County. I've met most of you before and I like to come at least just once a year and be on the agenda, speak about a couple of things, field questions, but also have an opportunity for the public to chime in because there's a lot of things going on. And a utility company affects everybody's lives and I just want to be here to demonstrate that, as most of you know, I'm involved in the city operations on a regular basis. And I help facilitate some of our business operations, our gas distribution, electric distribution, our tree trimming programs, et cetera, with the city staff. We have a, I've been here for about a year and a half and we have a really strong relationship with our city staff. And I'm really proud that over the last year and a half, that's grown over time. So very, very pleased with that. There's two issues that I want to touch on. First is we had an underground electrical switch failure, as most of you know about. And then I'll talk about some of our tree trimming practices and tree removals and how we're working together. So this past winter, in the middle of the night, a vault which contained electrical switch gear was forced open with a incredible high-intensity switch failure. The pictures, I'm sure you saw, and, you know, just driving by, it was a pretty dramatic situation. The morning after, I was on a call with our regional leadership, starting at eight o'clock in the morning. Everybody was involved and very concerned about what had happened. I, we had crews out there immediately in the middle of the night. The power is eventually restored. Over the next week or so, we had crews out working most evenings so that we didn't disrupt the electrical power during the day to replace the switch and get everything back up and running. I'd like to acknowledge the fact that this probably had a significant effect on the building owner and some of the tenants. And some of the emotions and feelings that go along with that are understood and we feel those very much as well. And it's part of the reason I wanted to be here is just to express the fact that we have some caring around events like this, which are emotional. It's a great rarity, but I wanted to be here to acknowledge that. Subsequently, we had a meeting with some of our leadership and the leadership of the city. And then over the coming months, we did an inventory of all the vaults around the plaza and down Broadway. We did a analysis of every switch that we had in all of these vaults. I think there's 25 switches. We determined, besides the one that failed, that there were three others that needed to be replaced. They were the same vintage. And two of those have been replaced, the third, sorry, the fourth one, sorry. We replaced the one that, that broke. We replaced two other ones. And actually, this evening, the last one is scheduled to be replaced. And I'm happy to answer questions on this, but maybe I'll just touch on our vegetation management programs. At PG&E, we spend about $1.8 billion a year to do tree trimming and tree removal. And I kind of wanted to, to explain the program in general because I don't think it's well-known. But we, we have three sort of levers that we're, we're pulling on this. First of all, we have some regulatory requirements from the California Public Utilities Commission. What essentially that means is that we need to keep our lines 1.5 feet away from all of the tree, all of the tree limbs at a minimum. And then in high-fire-threat districts, that's four feet. The second reason that we trim trees is from an asset protection standpoint, from a reliability, from a public safety, from falling trees and branches, et cetera. And then lastly is fire prevention. As we know, there's been many catastrophic wildfires in California, as well as around the world. Lahaina, Fort Maturi, Fort McMurray, Portugal, Spain. Obviously, in Sonoma County, we've had some, the Paradise Fire. Catastrophic wildfires shall stop is our stand at PG&E. And so a lot of this tree trimming is focused around making sure that we don't, our equipment doesn't start fires. We inspect everything once a year. So in PG&E territory, that's more than 100,000 miles. And in high-fire-threat areas, usually it's twice a year. Locally, if you look at a map in Sonoma County about where we're working, it's everywhere, every day. And in Sonoma, it's probably not every day, but it's frequently. PG&E gets all of the encroachment permits. And then we have contractors that do all of our work. Though we do, I should say, the contractors do all of the work, though we do have oversight and managers that work directly for PG&E that are oftentimes onsite, but typically not. The local ordinances that we have here, I think I want to highlight one thing, is that utility companies in California don't get tree trimming permits. We get encroachment permits, which means when our trucks park in the street, the city is responsible for that. So we have to get permission to be in the street. And we do all of that permitting ourselves. And there's one area that we're working on with the city, which is defining the difference between tree trimming and tree removal. I'd like to say that not just in Sonoma, but all over PG&E territory, people are emotional about trees and tree removal, removals especially. And what I've done and our vegetation management crews, along with the city, is we've differentiated between tree trimming and tree removals. And over the past year, we've had four or five onsite meetings to look at trees and see, can we modify what we would maybe typically do because of a significance of a tree? There's lots of gray area in here and we try to make sure that we're cognizant of how the city will react. We're not perfect. Councilmember Well and I worked for almost a year on a really difficult situation with a tree. And I must say that it's emotionally challenging for lots of people, including myself. And then I'll just close by saying that in the last few weeks, we had a wildfire fund that was approved last Saturday by the state legislature, which is to bolster the $18 million wildfire fund. So that, the details of that will be worked out next year. Essentially what that does is protect individuals, homeowners, who are affected by catastrophic wildfire. And so that started with $18 billion because of the Southern California fires. That looks like it's going away, so we're going to be re-initiating that. Tomorrow, if you want to weigh in, the California Public Utilities Commission is considering undergrounding going, going forward. So in Sonoma County, if the CPUC so chooses, we'll have about 600 more miles of lines going underground. If you're interested, please call in or write to the CPUC tomorrow and you can contact me and I can tell you how to do that or send you a note to how to do that. But if the CPUC decides that they don't want to concentrate on undergrounding, that won't happen. So thank you very much, and if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, if someone wants to listen in or send a comment in to that meeting, where would they send that?
Well, so I could send Rebecca a sheet that maybe could be sent out or I could send it to all of you. But I, I would say from a public standpoint, just Google the CPUC.
Yeah, go on and look at their meetings.
Yes, I do have.
No, I think that that's fine. So you could go to the CPUC website and, and look at the meetings just like you do for our website.
And for elected officials, the first 45 minutes is dedicated for elected officials to speak. So if you wanted to call in, you could do that as well.
And once again, it's tomorrow at what time?
Eight forty-five is I, I think what it is.
In the morning, okay.
Yeah, in the morning.
Thank you, thank you very much. Let's see if we have other questions here. Yes.
Can you designate someone to call in on behalf of the elected body?
I don't know the answer, but I would say yes.
So, you know, if, if this is legit, I would like to suggest that, I would like to certainly have our voices heard by the CPUC. I know my street could, well, we, you know, chop the heck out of our trees all the time. And there's a lot of power lines in that area. And as I know there are in many other neighborhoods in Sonoma. But I think that it would be, I mean, I just, just looking at the consensus and the head nods around this dais. I mean, I would like for somebody to be able to for sure call in on behalf of the Sonoma City Council and say, we would really like to have that happen in the city of Sonoma. So I don't know, looking at the city attorney, if that's a, in order.
That's not agendized, so there's, we couldn't have a vote on that. But certainly, the mayor is authorized to speak on behalf of the city.
I'm happy to call in tomorrow morning.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
I will send you the directions.
Thank you very much.
That would be very helpful. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And can I ask another question?
Yes, of course you can ask, yes.
So I know there's all kinds of people that put stickers on doors about various things and sometimes they claim to be PG&E and sometimes they are not. Can you tell me if there was some activity recently where there was notices put on doors regarding something related to PG&E? Because there was someone doing that in my neighborhood.
So all over PG&E territory, I'm assuming other utilities in California have the same issue. What you'll get from PG&E typically is about tree trimming.
It wasn't about tree trimming.
And the one that you're probably speaking about was about solar. They made it seem very much that there was some legal action that you could take advantage of.
No, I know that guy. I'm, no, he doesn't pass the giggle test with me. But, no, there was another, it was something completely different. So, but it seemed to be related, so I just bring it to your attention.
Yeah, thank you very much. We know about this. Typically, PG&E notices are boring, straightforward, factual, with a number to call, you know, 800-PGE-5000. And frankly, if you have any situation like that, 800-PGE-5000, you get to somebody and it's a great way to report this.
And I think that is important because there are people out there who are, you know, do receive these street vendors that come through and claim they're going to do this and that for you. And they're not official and they're certainly not sanctioned by the city. And so, thank you.
All right, do we have other questions? Yes, Vice Mayor Wellender.
Several questions. First question, I'm curious, again, in light of, we all tend to be products of past experiences. In terms of communicating with residents about a tree of concern, what is the protocol? Or how is, what kind of discussion does PG&E actually engage with, with the homeowner before action is taken?
So in, in general, it's notification rather than discussion. However, there are numbers to call about that specific property. And they can engage with somebody about what the plan is and what to do. I would suggest that our best path forward on this is for, we'll need a encroachment permit to do that work. And having a conversation with the property owner or the resident, the city, and PG&E is an appropriate way to get the best response. The more eyes on it, especially when there's difficult situations or sticky situations, we've engaged in many of those and it works out much better.
So are you suggesting that if a homeowner gets a notification and there's concern, there's a number to call?
Yes.
And at the end of that telephone, there's someone that's going to be assuaging the individual's fears? And at the end of that telephone, there's someone that's going to be assuaging the individual's fears? Because it seems like when you start talking about dealing with trees, they are very site-specific. And it seems like, in my opinion, a very ineffectual way to assuage one's concerns over the phone, whether that individual is talking to somebody at PG&E headquarters in San Francisco or one of your field offices. So it seems like there is a need to have, uh, given the nature of trees and the potential work, to actually have onsite meetings and whether that should include the city. Uh, certainly PG&E and the homeowner come up with some sort of understanding, uh, just.
I would say that, um, we have PG&E employees for every town and every acre of Sonoma County and for the rest of our territory, um, who are responsible for this area. And there's several of them. So when we have meetings in town, three, four or five people from PG&E might show up, who are all responsible. So there's, there's different layers and we have a whole regional model that, um, all of these people are working for. So it definitely does not feel like you're calling PG&E headquarters and, you know, there's nobody to come out and talk to, uh, there's, the people that you're talking to or meeting with know this town.
Okay, great. Um, I would be just curious too, uh, briefly speaking about some of the efforts that PG&E has made besides undergrounding as far as trying to minimize fire danger, whether it's isolating or having detectors up on the wires or whatever you've been doing, in brief.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So I think I'll start with this. Um, ve- very rarely do we have a public safety power shut off. That's when we shut off the power to a specific circuit that could be 85 miles long or 100 miles long. Um, that happens when there is very low humidity, uh, low, uh, dead fuels, low live fuels, humidity, and a lot of wind. So as some of you remember, five, six years ago, we were shutting off hundreds of thousands of people. Last year, we shut off 500 homes for, you know, six hours. So we have been able to do that because we are sectionalizing the lines for the most, uh, dramatic situation where the winds are just so high and the risk for catastrophic wildfire is so high. The second thing that we've been doing a lot of is spending hundreds of million dollars of adding new equipment and new software so that if a tree branch, which is, um, let me say this, in the wintertime, there's not much risk of a fire. So when we get into the summertime and there's, and, and there's more risk of a fire, we have added tens of thousands of devices and software so that when a tree branch falls against a line, it immediately shuts off in one tenth of a second. Um, and prevents wildfires. The problem with that is somebody has to go out and determine that this section of the line where the power went out does not have a tree still laying against it or a branch so that when they turn the power back on. So we call these enhanced power line safety settings. Uh, most of the time in cities, that's not a big deal, but for many people who live in the countryside on a circuit that has a lot of trees around it, this happens very often. We also have a lot of animal activity. Turkeys specifically, um, have big wings and they turn the power off. Uh, and then, um, of course, our veg, veg management practices are, are sort of the third layer. And then the fourth layer is that we have been, uh, installing what we call covered power lines, basically insulated wire, that, you know, when you look at the power, uh, power poles, the, the three wires that are running on top are traditionally not been insulated. So in high fire threat areas, we've been insulating those, uh, and then changing the poles from wood to metal so that, um, they're more sturdy. Um, and there's some studies that have been done and the risk of wildfire in PG&E territory is dramatically lower. Um, unfortunately, this is born out of some catastrophic wildfires, but we're actually a global leader. Um, we're hosting conferences for other utilities around the country from South America and Europe to learn about all of the different procedures that we follow, um, today.
Great, and my last quick question does go back to the vault explosion. Um, I, would it be fair to say that PG&E will be properly compensating any of the damage that was rendered by, to the, either the tenant and/or the building owner? At some point in time, I realize that you may not have the definitive answer, but I think as a representative from PG&E, I'd love to walk out this evening thinking that indeed, um, you will, uh, that PG&E will be, uh, responsive.
Yes, thank you for the question. So I did speak with our attorney who's handling this claim. He walked me through the process. Typically, a property owner or business owner would go to their insurance company first and determine if they want to use that coverage or they want to file a claim with PG&E. Uh, in this case, in all the cases, it's go online and fill out a form, call the 800 number and it's, and, and that process starts. It's a heavily regulated process that comes to a conclusion. Um, I can't talk about this specific one because, uh, um, we're not allowed to talk about customers at all in any way, um, from a privacy standpoint. They're welcome to talk about it, but we can't. Um, lost my train of thought, but yes, there is a specific process that's followed that, um, comes to a resolution.
Quick follow-up to that, is that a speedy process?
I don't know the answer to how speedy it is and I didn't get any information that said, here's the average time. Um, I just, I don't have a comment on it. I have feelings, but, um, no.
Hopes, dreams.
I have lots of hopes, lots of dreams.
Well, I'm sure, I mean, like I have a whole list of questions that I could ask you, but I am going to refrain, yes, I'm going to refrain from asking because we have a, a quite a lengthy agenda ahead of us. But I, if anybody, if there are no other questions, I would just like to thank you for being here tonight and encourage, you know, as much, you know, public, uh, forums that you could have so that PG&E can.
Oh, I'd be happy to, I'd love to be.
Great, seems like you do. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Bye. All right, so now we are moving on to our consent calendar, item number seven. So, uh, all of the items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in a single motion and there's no separate discussion of these items unless a council or staff requests specific items to be removed or for separate action. So does anybody wish to pull any of the items? Great, so, uh, I'm opening it up for a public comment on, uh, the consent calendar. Does anybody have any comments on the consent calendar? Okay, oh, I have one comment. I just think it's really exciting is the 7.2 on the consent calendar, which is actually moving, going to help move forward our utility box art wrap pilot program, of which there was, uh, there will be five utility boxes that will be wrapped and I believe that there's 16 artists that responded and they'll go through the process of picking the utility, uh, items, boxes first and then look at which of those, uh, art, art renderings, I think that's the best word for it, the renderings fit best on that utility box. So anyway, I just wanted to pull that out because sometimes consent seems pretty, like it's a lot of boring, but this is kind of exciting in there. All right, so, um, so do I have a motion?
I move approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, moving on. So now we do not have a public hearing tonight, so we're, uh, moving on to item nine on the regular agenda. And the first item on our agenda is to get an update, uh, which is going to be very exciting. This is another, see, it's an exciting meeting tonight, uh, on, um, West Spain Street improvements. Uh, and we are looking forward to hearing those from Michael Berger, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for, uh, hearing this item tonight, Mayor for Arreves and Council. Um, this is going to be an update that is divided into two sections. Our first section... Is it on? There we go. Our first section is a little bit of background on Spain Street and what's been happening on Spain Street for the last couple of years. It's going to be divided into three sections. The first three, traffic hazard reporting forms, complaints received, a little background on the traffic hazard reporting form and city actions that have been taken. The second section is going to be on the project itself, which Public Works is requesting authorization for tonight. And we'll go over a little bit of background on the project, project funding, and then staff recommendations, finally. The first portion of the presentation is some background on the number of traffic hazard reporting forms we've received. And we have received four traffic hazard reporting forms. And when I say we, that's Public Works and the Traffic Safety Committee. From nine, from 2022 to 2025, one traffic hazard reporting form was originally received in '22 and was resubmitted in 2024. This traffic hazard reporting form also was an agenda item at one of our Traffic Safety Committee meetings, like some forms end up. Uh, these traffic hazard reporting forms requested anything from traffic calming and striping upgrades, red curbs, improvements of all different types at the Third Street West and Spain Street intersection, and also a traffic circle. Staff have also received multiple complaints regarding the condition of West Spain Street just based on potholes, noise, et cetera. Speaking of traffic hazard reporting forms, this is a page off our website and it includes a newly updated electronic traffic hazard reporting form that citizens can submit on their computer. And that's right below in the middle of the screen there, the recently adopted traffic calming measure handbook that was also just put up on our website. So something that we worked with our astounding public information officer on and she gets that stuff right up and running and the citizens are real happy with it. A little bit of background on the traffic hazard reporting form when it comes in. The first thing that happens is we receive input. This could come from a citizen, it could come from one of us filling out a form for a complaint. We generate an issue and then we discuss the issue in step two with our traffic engineer and staff. Then we bring the traffic hazard reporting form to the Traffic Safety Committee and we discuss it at the committee. We review it and they give recommendations. In step four, the recommendations are taken by staff. We are talking about implementation. At some points during this process, we bring in other, uh, branches of the city in a traffic engineering safety team meeting. And that would be the police department, the fire department. We're getting as much input into these, um, issues as possible. And then step five is implementation. And implementation, we're going out into the field. We are, um, doing striping, signage, RRFBs, all kinds of different things to try to calm traffic. And also prior to and post, we're doing speed surveys to see how effective the measures are. As I was mentioning, some of these traffic, uh, hazard reporting forms, we have ad-hocs for. We do test meetings, we consult the traffic engineer and on some of these, he develops a traffic memorandum, which we present at the Traffic Safety Committee meeting. And sometimes we do dedicated agenda items for an individual traffic hazard reporting form. And this is a standard process, it's very transparent. And it's our goal to incorporate ideas and concepts out of the ATP, the Active Transportation Plan, and other studies that we commission like complete streets, safety assessments. City actions taken on Spain Street. In the upper left-hand corner of the slide, we, one of the items that we did as a result of Assembly Bill 413, the daylighting law, we painted red curb on the upstream side of the crossings on Spain Street. This was done in conjunction with painting the red curb at the plaza and around town at various locations where we either had a complaint or we just felt the need based on traffic engineering. And as you could see, the red curb there, it's 20 feet from the crosswalk. And that doesn't mean a 20-foot stripe is necessarily put down in each case, but we do get that 20 feet of protection. But sometimes we don't have to start the stripe right at the crosswalk. The second, on the upper right picture, is the remote flashing beacons, rapid flashing beacons that we put in at Spain and Third Street. This was the result of a traffic hazard reporting form being submitted. And we took, we got input from our traffic engineer, got input from the Traffic Safety Committee and went ahead and installed those. And those are very effective, getting about 60 pushes a day registering on each one of those buttons, compared to 90 on Broadway at Pete's. We don't just look at concepts too that are, um, written and necessarily in our traffic manual. We're also discussing these concepts with bikes, the Bicycle Coalition, Sonoma County Bike Coalition, and SCTCA, Sonoma County Transit, or Sonoma County Transit Authority, and trying to come up with new concepts that are a little bit more trending, that are being installed in other agencies around the county and also in NAPA and Marin, working with different vendors, try to come up with these concepts. And the one that I have in the bottom right corner there is, these are painted bulbouts for pedestrian protection, similar to what we did on the mid-block crossings at Broadway, but with more paint and these are being put in, installed in other jurisdictions in Sonoma County right now. Um, another concept that was brought up at the, uh, at this intersection was a traffic circle. And that was requested in one of the traffic, traffic hazard reporting forms that we received. Um, this was evaluated twice by our traffic engineer, the second time in a traffic memorandum. And the problems with putting a traffic circle at the intersection in Spain and Third are that, number one, there's too many cars on Spain Street. And the way that the congestion with a traffic circle is going to affect that intersection is it's basically going to turn it into a four-way stop sign because of the number of cars that drive up and down Spain Street, east and west. It's just, there's too many cars to handle a traffic circle. And then also, based on the geometry of the intersection, the traffic engineer determined that as cars went around that circle, they would actually impede on the crosswalks. And so there's a dangerous situation out there that, uh, we can't be putting a traffic circle in there. This is a couple of sections out of our Active Transportation Plan. It just designates Spain Street in the section that we're talking about from Fifth to First as a, a bike boulevard proposed. This is a tier one priority in our ATP and we're going to go out and we're going to do an effective installation of all of the different features that I'll be discussing in just a second that are in our, uh, Spain Street CAP project. But we're not just going to stop there. We're going to go out, we're going to do a speed survey before, we're going to install all the measures through the CAP, and then we're going to do a speed survey after and we're going to see how effective were these and where did we end up? What kind of a change did we make with the project? Lastly, I just wanted to say that, um, Public Works is, Public Works and the Traffic Safety Committee, we are committed to moving these, these measures forward and implementing well-thought-out projects from the Active Transportation Plan that promote multimodal forms of transportation and safe travel for all the different types of transportation. And that wraps up my fir-, the first part of my presentation and moving into the second part, which is getting familiar with the project. This project starts at the Plaza, Street West on Spain Street and runs all the way to Highway 12. It's divided into three sections. Between First Street and Second Street, we have pavement repairs that are in areas where the pavement's failing. Between Second and Third Street, we have a grind and a complete overlay of the roadway. And then between Seventh Street and Highway 12, we're doing pavement repairs in there again. And those are a little bit weird because we slurried that road a while back and the slurry is failing in some spots. and the slurry is failing in some spots. And this isn't something that people are used to seeing, but we think we have an effective fix for that. We'll be implementing that fix. In addition to the pavement repairs, we're going to be doing striping upgrades. We're doing edge line striping, center line striping, like shown in the picture. And we're putting down sharrows, the bike striping and bike route signage. This project opened bids on September 9th, 2025. Bids were received ranging from 447,000 to 951,000. And Team Gelati was the lowest apparent bidder at $447,000. The project budget, we've got in there the lowest apparent bidder, our contingency, construction contingency, and then QC testing budget for a total of $529,000. Because this project was already authorized, we had 150,000 in this year's budget that was authorized previously by council. But we only spent 25,000 of that on the design phase, so we have about 125 left over. And so we're facing a deficit of $404,000 for this project. To address the funding gap, as I said, council previously approved 150,000, 125 remaining. And we've got a proposed budget amendment there that's divided up into four categories that are shown. 200,000 for Measure M, and then 104,000 for SB1, 100,000 for gas tax, for a total of $404,000. Uh, tonight, staff is recommending that we adopt plans and the specifications for the West Spain Street Rehab, Project CAP T11. We award the contract to Team Gelati Inc. Execute a construction contract for 447,000 and authorize up to 15% contingency. And adopt the updated capital improvement program budget for FY 2526. And in your item package tonight, in addition to the the item, we have CAPT 11 plans, the resolution for project award, the resolution for the amended budget, budget adjustment form that we've worked with Finance Department on, and then also the amended project budget for Public Works for FY 2526. And with that, thanks again, and are there any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Gurney.
So when do you project starting this project and how long will it take?
Approximately 30 days, and there's 30 calendar days in the project, and calendar days equate to about 45, 30 contract days in the calendar, which equates to about 45 calendar days. And then all weather depending. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep.
Other questions? Yes, Vice Mayor Wellender.
Great. Um, first question is, uh, with the receipt of those five bids, when there's a swing of almost double, is that not a red flag? In the sense that tight drawings suggest there should be tight numbers. And when you have a wild swing of almost double, that suggests that either one contractor didn't give a rap and just blew through it or something. So did you have any concerns?
If I would only had two bids, yes, I would have been concerned. But because we had fairly good grouping in the first three, and that's kind of my rule of thumb. If you get good grouping in the first three bids, you're usually looking pretty good, and that's what we got. We had five, five bids, six bids, three of them were fairly tight. And um, the uh, low bid was within 10% of the engineer's estimate on the right side.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
When I'm looking at the drawing, it, it does kind of pick out the uh minimal grinding and infill strips in various locations. At, at what point does a project tip to, it's more efficient just to grind the whole street and repave the whole street?
Well, that was definitely the case from second to third.
Okay.
Yeah, and definitely not the case between Seventh and the highway. Because there's minimal work happening down there and we should be able to get that fairly easily. You know, do you say 30%, 40%? The good news is, is that we have a paving contractor right there. We're not mobilizing in to do minimal work. And um, Spain Street in the past, uh, from Third to Fourth, it has been paved already once, one block, or they went to Fifth. And basically, you know, when we're doing Friar Picket Nash, we're doing all the paving end to end of the roads that need it. We're not doing any restoration in there. But with the, with the spot from First to Second, it was, it was worthy of just doing restoration.
In terms of quality control, I know the streets that you just expressed, I believe failed back in the 90s or something in terms of we weren't, we didn't get the, the functionality or the service of those streets. And it was implied that something happened with quality control, or we didn't get the quality that the specs. I'm, what's the process that we go through now as far as are you doing boring samples or compression tests? Or what, what's the quality control measures?
So council authorized our on-call geotechnical engineer recently. We're getting our geotech engineer in there to do this quality control. And they'll be doing almost full-time inspection during the paving, which is really good.
And that's the sub-base inspections, or is it both?
Uh, well, we're not doing base work on this. We're doing deep lifts.
Okay.
So we'll do grind outs and then deep lifts, but anytime we're putting AC down, they'll be there.
Okay.
And these guys are experts in paving. They're going to come in, they're going to do gradations, they're going to do sand equivalents, they're going to do oil contents, and they're going to do compaction testing of the paving in place. Really not, that's more of an issue when you're not doing an overlay because you've got your base course already there. But we'll, the $15,000 is going to be money well spent, and that's just, that's going to be a standard for Public Works when we're doing this type of work.
Great. That, that reassures me. Thank you.
Do you have another question, Ron?
No, I don't.
Okay, so Councilmember Dean.
Do you have the detail and the layout for the rest striping? Or where we can then see? Because uh, feels like you want to uh, design another, another bike lane? Or that isn't a change from the original and the?
Well, we're not putting in a bike lane, we're doing a bike boulevard, which is a shared roadway, and this is similar to what we have on Napa Street from Fifth Street East to the city line. So we're putting a fog stripe in where there currently doesn't exist a fog stripe, but there's going to be parked cars in there. It's more, the bike boulevard concept that's going to happen on Spain Street is more of a shared roadway, cars sharing it with the bicyclists. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to alert cars through the signage and the thermoplastic legends on the ground that there are bicycles on this road and you should drive accordingly. Yeah.
Uh, my another question is because on the three and a half years ago, and we restriped on the Broadway. If any, you know, follow up the data and showing, because at that time, uh, when it wasn't approved, it's very, very in controversy. So that I would like to see if we have any uh, updated data. And this way for the city council, we can report it to other community. Uh, at least I haven't heard any major car accident after we know restriping.
Yeah, and what we could do is we could, we could work with the police department on that. Yeah, to find out if there are any collisions that have been noted by the police department.
All right, yeah, this is a different, but anyway, yeah, good follow-up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the explanation of the shero. I looked it up today and it's, I like the term. I mean, and it's very different. It's not a dedicated bike lane. So it's just the, it's share this area, recognize that there's cars and bikes, and it is a bike boulevard. So it's, it's making sure people are aware of it, and that hopefully presents, you know, creates the traffic calming. All right, so other questions? We have no other questions, we will open this up for public comment. Anybody that would like to make any comment or have questions on this item, please come up. Thank you very much, Mr. Berger. Hello.
Carol Campbell, 307 West Spain Street. Very popular corner. First of all, I want to thank everyone for having the lights put in at that corner. They work beautifully. And there are more than 60 times that sign that people cross. What happens is people who have been crossing there forever, all are dog walkers and bike riders that look both ways, because I'm out in the yard now that I'm retired, look both ways, and if they're, they know they have enough space, they don't push the button, they just go. Whether they're walking their dog or pushing their baby carriages, and we have a lot of walkers on that corner. The children I'm glad to see coming up from St. Francis have been told to push the light if they see or not see any cars. So that has been good for me. The second thing I'd like to say is the speed on Spain is awful. I've lived there for 48 years on that corner. I've seen a lot of changes in town, but the speed is just awful. And what's happened to our streets? We have heavy, humongous trucks, delivery trucks. The beer truck that went by today had to be like longer than my lot. And they go fast, and they're rough on the roads, and they shouldn't even be out in there. I don't know what we can do about fresh signs. Um, I've looked for them and it's like, we don't really see our signs that say no trucks or turn at so many blocks. I don't know what we can do about that without having somebody posted. But thank you. We do need some help on West Spain Street, and the pavement really does need to be repaired. I appreciate all your effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone, Council. Uh, Chris Woodcock, 235 West Spain Street. So living on West Spain Street really motivated me to become active within Traffic Safety Committee and for the Sonoma County BPAC, which is a Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So I served 10 years on traffic safety with Armando Zimmerman, and I'm still on the Sonoma County BPAC. Um, I just had a few issues, so I, one of the things is I didn't, I was on the original petition in 2022 and was not alerted to this until I looked at my email today and saw this. And I just wanted to provide a few comments on that. You know, when we're thinking about this, um, you know, it's, is paint going to really change much? Probably not. And I take issue with sharrows. I know they're, they're nice in a diagram. I don't think it's going to change the overall design of the roadway, but um, I, I don't think a shero is really going to lower speed. And we actually looked at that in 2012 after the initial Spain, if anybody remembers that from, I think it was 2010, when I moved back to Spain Street. And um, we decided against sharrows at that time because sometimes it gives the wrong impression that it's a safe area to ride a bike. And I think with Mrs. Campbell's comment about the speed, the trucks, sometimes, you know, you don't really feel safe, and I don't know if we want to encourage that. I want to encourage a bike boulevard, but if we look at what a bike boulevard actually is, um, it's 3,000 cars per day, um, speeds around 20 miles an hour. So if we were at the BPAC, we would not be advocating for this as a bike boulevard. I mean, even though I want to see this as bike boulevard, I think any design's going to help, and I think the team's done a really good job. But um, anyways, I just want to say in my two seconds that um, please take action to provide the bulbouts. So there's a section, there's an additional cost. I think that that would be a good thing at the intersection of Spain and Third West. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Armando Zimmerman, West Spain, West Spain Street. Uh, I have some handles for the council or anyone else that might need it. Did you start my two minutes already?
Um, let me, please, please start.
Please. You're not making me nervous or anything, I don't know. Um, so anyway, tell me when I can start.
Oh, it started.
Every second is, is, you know, uh, okay. Basically, what I've handed out is the, really, never mind, it's still coming around, right? I really don't want to start until you see what I'm handing you, and because we're at a little bit of a disadvantage because we don't know what you have, although Mr. Guan's uh, email said you had back, the background. I'm not sure exactly what that is, but I did want to clarify, you know, a little bit about the background. Okay, now, okay. Okay, okay, basically, the summary that I just handed you at the, at the, on that page is probably the clearest concise example of what happened from May 2022 to the present. In that, we submitted a background report, we use city information, vol, traffic volume, et cetera. We tried to do the best example of what's happening on Spain Street. And we then submitted two more, and they were not different so, traffic hazard reports. We, we submitted one in uh, in uh, 23 and another one in 24. So they were just condensing down our, the issues as we saw them and trying to get more information. In the meantime, we were also trying to get on the traffic well, traffic, traffics, agenda, trying to get it. And we were never agendized. There were comments made, uh, you know, over your on the log, et cetera, et cetera. It was, it was a very frustrating thing. We did not achieve the agenda until May of this year. And so consequently, so many things, as this first little paragraph says, happened behind closed doors in, in basically the uh, what, what can I say? Public Works, the Test Committee, whatever, a lot of things. So when you look, when we looked at the, the mechanical study that was uh, introduced that was done on April 29th, 2025, we were going like, some of this was familiar and some of it was not familiar.
So I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, Mr. Zimmerman.
All I'm trying to tell you is what we saw today in the, in the newspaper about this new thing. The uh, first of all, the red curbs have not been painted. The side streets at Sec, at Third and Fourth Street have not been painted. The ones that are there were repainted. None of them comply with the law of 20 feet, et cetera, et cetera. So there are a lot of things
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Not.
Because we're trying to give, I understand that, and we'll give it, have a chance for some response to that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you. I just really try to keep it to two minutes so that everybody, it's fair for everybody that comes up.
Hi, I'm Sandy Zimmerman. I also live at 275 West Spain Street, and um, I thank you that things are happening. Um, I do want to uh, say though that it becomes a hazard to even walk on Spain Street because the bicycle issues the sidewalk, and I do not blame them because it's dangerous. But they don't always let you know they're behind you, so it's a little dangerous to walk. So it's not just car traffic that, that is a problem. The other thing is that unless we keep those great big trucks off that street, and there, there is signage way close to Highway 12 that are not allowed to be on the street, but they ignore it. And I'm not just talking about delivery trucks that come in. I haven't really had a problem with them speeding at all. What I've had problem with is people come in, especially maybe a lot of the yard workers or whatever with their big trailers, and they're banging and they're, they're, I mean, it's really scary. So, so signage all along the way and maybe reinforcement of the fact that that's not supposed to be a bypass for trucks. The other thing is that the red striping, and I'm trying to talk fast, so I, I don't go over two minutes. The red striping isn't long enough. If you've, I mean, we are the parking lot for all of the activities that happen on the If you've, I mean, we are the parking lot for all of the activities that happen on the plaza, all of them. And they all come and park and it's a public street, they can park. But we can't get out of our driveways without, you know, taking our lives and our cars damaged in its hands because we can't see. I mean, they do need to, at a driveway, they do need to be long enough so that you could actually edge out a little bit and see. Because I've had many near misses myself with that. And then finally, the speeding, the speeding is an issue. I know we don't have enough enforcement to, to make a difference in terms of that. But I'm afraid that with this new improved road, which I'm very excited about, people are just going to go faster. You know, it's going to be a faster road than it is now. So I don't know what you do about that, but I want to lay that problem out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment at this time? And so now I'm, well, actually, I'd just like to see if Public Works Director Berger would like to respond to a couple of the questions. I know that there was some discussion of a, you know, speed feedback sign, some of the things and, you know, kind of the studies around the calming. Thank you.
Yeah, so in relation to a speed feedback sign, we have a speed feedback sign on order. When the project is done, Public Works crews or when the, when the sign gets in, could be before the end of the project, Public Works crews under the Traffic Engineers Direction will place a speed feedback sign on northeast pound or west pound. Like I was saying earlier, we're going to do speed surveys prior to the start of the construction project. And we're going to do speed surveys after the construction project to see what effect it had. Just some historical data. On average, this road sees about 8,000 cars a day. We did speed surveys out there in 2006 and 2011 in which the 85th percentile was going 30 miles an hour or less and 26 miles an hour average for those two years. That did go up a hair in the speed surveys we did in March 23. In February 25, the 85th percentile went up to 31 miles an hour, but the average speed was still 26 miles an hour. So there was a slight uptick in that. But the, the speed limit hasn't changed basically in the five different speed surveys that we've done. Yeah, now regarding the red stripe, okay, I just want to be really clear. You don't measure the red stripe. You measure the distance from the crosswalk bar. And I personally went out and measured those at 3rd and 4th Street this week. They're all well beyond 20 feet from the stripe on the crosswalk bar. That doesn't mean the stripe is 20 feet. The stripe could only be 13 feet because there's a round corner and we don't stripe round corners. Round corners are illegal to park in front of. Everybody knows it. And there's a handicap ramp there. So if you go out and you measure the red stripe and it's only 17 feet, that doesn't mean we shorted you three feet. It's 20 feet from the crosswalk and those red stripes are 20 feet from the crosswalks. And we didn't do the side street. We did, as the graphic showed that I had earlier, it's the vision triangle of the approaching car. And the approaching car is the one that is critical because they're the ones that have to see the person in the crosswalk. We're not worried about the downstream car as much. That 20 foot on the downstream side of the other side of the street crosswalk, that's ticketable because of the state law that got passed. So the police department can ticket. They don't need red curb to enforce that. But those aren't critical from a visibility standpoint, sight distance standpoint. And that's why we didn't stripe that, that stretch. Because every stripe we put down has to be maintained. And so we don't want to stripe every corner in the city or we're going to become painters. And did that, do you think that that covered most of your questions, Mayor?
I think that that covered most of the questions that came up except for the, the charros and kind of the, the, whether the painting and the charros are like the best that we can be doing in regards to it being a bike boulevard.
I wanted to reemphasize that the graphic that I had up of the painted curb bulb outs. This is something that we're looking into right now. We're collecting data. It's in our traffic, it's in our traffic calling manual. However, we're used to the traditional form, which is concrete like we have at Fifth Street East and East Napa Street. The concrete bulb outs, they're expensive. We're going to, we're going to be putting these painted ones down. We've already got some conceptual drawings or potentially incorporating them into the project. And you're going to be seeing more of these around town that have been vetted through the Traffic Safety Committee and Public Works and the Traffic Engineer. So we will be doing curb bulb outs, the painted bulb outs.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And then we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Comments and discussion?
I have a question from Mike.
Oh, you can ask, you can ask Mike a question.
Sorry, Mike. In essence, other than smoothing out the pavement, what is your, what are the goals for this project? I'm trusting or targeting slowing down traffic or what, what beyond the smoothness?
Definitely. That's a great question. And, you know, I feel the speaker's frustration that this has been in the system for a couple of years. I feel their frustration. And basically, we delayed the striping so that it could coincide with the CAP project. We didn't put a bunch of striping down, grind it out the next year and have to put it down again. So we're going to do speed surveys before and after. It's a goal of all the residents living on Spain Street to slow the traffic down. And that's a goal of Public Works too. And they've made that very clear. This is one of the, you know, it's, it's a super busily traveled collector street for the city and parallels Highway 12. It also has a lot of bicycle traffic and the speeds could come down. And so we're going to, we're going to work with them. And like I said, we're going to do before and after speed surveys and that's going to tell us a lot more.
And I think it feels narrow when you have parallel parked cars on both sides. And I think that just accentuates the sense of speed as well. At least that's been my experience going up and down.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the philosophies there is if you put a fog stripe on the right-hand side of the road, it, it gives the drivers the impression that it is narrower and tends to make them go slower. And so we're going to see if that works.
Great. Thank you.
You got it.
Yes. Councilwoman Lowe.
I just would like to make a comment regarding the bicycles on the sidewalk. I, I also complained about that when we were discussing Broadway because they hand out bicycles at the lodge, for example. And, you know, it's just you go up the door, you go up the sidewalk. And it's, it is, it is very dangerous. And we do have some prohibitions against that. I mean, if you're, I think it's like if you're learning to ride a bike, it's okay. But, you know, these guys aren't learning to ride a bike. They're just, you know, having fun, you know? I like fun, but it's, it's really, it's very dangerous to the pedestrians because you don't anticipate it at all. So I think that's something that, you know, I love the idea of people bicycling. Hopefully now that it's a bike boulevard and all this new striping and so forth, we can also enforce the fact that those bicycles with the riders with helmets need to be on the road. Thank you.
Other comments? Yes. Councilmember Dean.
I have another question regarding the contractor because that is the lowest price, 447. I'm wondering if they provided any after-projecting service or at the first time didn't do good work and several months and then they come back, fix a little bit here or a little bit there. Or they provide two years or three years and qualities in the service, something like?
One-year warranty.
Oh, okay.
One-year warranty in all of our CAP projects, that's right in our standard contract. And the, the price, the price is in the reasonable range. The price is in the reasonable range. Yeah.
Okay. That is a one-year warranty that is required by the city or that they provide it?
Required. It's right in the contract.
Yeah, good to know.
Yeah, we'll have a maintenance bond after the contract to substantiate that for one year.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, discussion in regards to this?
I have some comments.
Yes, Councilmember Vice Mayor Wellender.
I think that I'm fully supportive of these improvements. But I also would like to suggest that we do what I call a post-mortem or post-occupancy evaluation, that after it's installed, that there is a period of time where we do evaluate and see, are, did we achieve what we wanted to? Yes or no? And if not, are there some improvements that we can make? I think this street is probably one of the most trafficked streets other than Highway 12. And I know we have Fifth Street West as well. But with the school, the attraction of the Lael House and that open field, I think it's paramount that we be very proactive in terms of trying to make that as safe as possible. I am encouraged with the painted bulb outs. I didn't think I would ever say this, but I'm going to say it with some trepidation. The white ballards that we put in around the plaza, I thought somebody that I meet once a week with thought that I would hate them. I surprised him and said I did not hate them. In fact, I think they kind of disappeared. So I can even see the possibility of, of that maybe being a next step for a bulb out enhancement without investing in very expensive curb and gutter. But I do think that there is great value in kind of if doing a post-occupancy, is it working? Is it not hitting our goals? But in short, I do support what's being proposed.
If there is any other discussion, do I have a motion?
I would like to move approval of the resolution of the City Council, the City of Sonoma, adopting the plans and specifications for the West Spain Street Rehabilitation Project, CIP T-11, Project Number 2502, accepting bids and awarding a contract to Team Gelati Incorporated, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract in the amount of $447,141 and 10 cents and authorizing the city manager to approve $67,071 and 17 cents, 15% in contingency.
I second.
All right. Would you take a roll call on this, please? Thank you.
Councilmember Lowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Farah Rivas?
Yes, I think this has taken us definitely in the right direction and we will know after they test again what else we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Farah Rivas, there is one more resolution requesting a budget amendment as well in this item?
Oh, yes. So, do I have a motion for the budget amendment?
I move approval of the budget amendment to supplement that.
I second.
Resolution.
All right. Take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Lowe? Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Farah Rivas?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir? Oh, yes, you can have a, we'll take a five-minute break. It's the march, yeah. Not. While they're together, we give folks a few seconds to get back to their seats here. Thank you. All right, now. So we're moving on to Item 9.2, which is Discussion, Consideration, and Direction Regarding Whether to Direct Staff to Initiate a Process to Permit Additional Cannabis Businesses to Operate Within the City, Including Update of Fees, Application Guidelines and Procedures and to Issue a Request for Proposals, RFP and Application Guidelines and Procedures and to Issue Requests or for Proposals. So, and we have our Community Development Director, Jennifer Gates, presenting to us. Oh, you started with David.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll just kick this off. I do want to just set the stage real quick. We are here based on a follow-up to a meeting on April 19th, 2023, where the City Council heard an item to discuss issuing another RFP for another dispensary. And it was determined that no action was taken at that meeting and it was told to be brought back at a later date. We are back here now to have a conversation. I am looking for a direction from the City Council to determine if we want to spend staff resources on this item right now. That, that would be helpful for me to know. And Jennifer's going to walk through this and what that would mean. We are, I, I recognize I've heard some of the comments and saw some of the feedback and letters that it's taken a while to get back to you.
Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not. Thank you very much. Moving on to 9.2. Yes? Yes, sir. Vice Mayor, sir?
I don't speak yet.
Oh, yes, you can have a five. We'll take a five-minute break. It's the march. Yeah. Not.
Customer care every day, and this consistency keeps our customers loyal and the community comfortable. My goal is simple, build careers for local people, and we can only do that with stability, which keeps hours steady, benefits intact, training strong, and cities 4% reliable. Please allow us to keep giving back through great in-store experiences and real growth opportunities for Sonoma residents. Protect what's working so we can keep investing in the people who live, work, and raise families here. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Yes, additional public comment? Josette Rose Iker, you all know me, and I think you know I write a column for The Sun, Personal and Political. Today I am here reaching out to you personally and economically, not politically. You have all heard my personal interaction with our only dispensary, Spark. At 74, I have been through several involved surgeries and live and cope with pain and lack of sleep by using cannabis tinctures. Spark does not and will not provide the products I need. The tale of my interactions can be found in my past columns. In light of being a founder for Wake Up Sonoma, I would be hypocritical for me to buy from another dispensary, John Lowe's, and from a prejudiced person. Economically, I cannot agree with the conclusions you have come to in the Agenda Item summary. Presently, the city is reliant on TOT and high-end wine industry tourism for funds. All economic reporting shows this industry losing ground every day. Yet while quoting statewide statistics on cannabis retail, you point to it declining and being oversaturated. I find this contradictory, that the council is pursuing revenue from a failing wine industry, yet points to the same reasons not to have two dispensaries. You look at statewide data for cannabis retail while ignoring our unique location. In Sonoma Valley, we are quite isolated. It's 30 to 40 minutes to the retail saturated areas of Napa or Santa Rosa. People are not nuts about delivery, it is more expensive. Healdsburg opened an RFP for two dispensaries, got eight qualified applicants, and these two are doing very well financially, and Healdsburg is even closer to saturated areas. If we open an RFP, I would predict there would be eight or more qualified applicants. These applicants will have done their due diligence and know they can be profitable. I think anyone else reading the same research as I have would come to the same conclusion. Thanks for listening today, and I hope you've all read the detailed emails that Dave, I, and others have sent you, because I can't do the detail in two minutes. And I think you've come to the wrong economic conclusions. You're not looking at this objectively. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, city manager, staff, and council members. I'm Perry Ellis-Panayawa, 1140 Beasley Way, Sonoma, member of the Sonoma Valley Cannabis Group. Six years ago, I attended a city council meeting and met Jewel Matheson, the wife of our former longtime mayor, Ken Brown. Jewel came up to me and asked if I was there to speak in behalf of a proposed cannabis dispensary. I told her I was not, though I totally supported it. I listened to Jewel's passionate speech that evening. She was a dynamo, for sure. A friend also agreed with me, because she had just heard Jewel speak at an Oakmont event. It was then that I joined the S V C B. I have friends and family who use cannabis products to relieve pain, anxiety, and a multitude of other medical conditions. I have read many scientific reports on the healing aspects of cannabis with findings, new findings on a frequent basis. When I was 18, I had just graduated from high school in San Francisco, and I was waiting to start the fall semester at San Francisco State. When my family received a devastating diagnosis for my mom, she had Alzheimer's. This explained why the things that were happening to her were happening. She was a wonderful mother and artist, and there was no cure. She was only in her early 50s. We were able to care for her for five years at home.
Excuse me, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap this up.
Alzheimer is called the cruel disease for a reason. Nowadays cannabis is used to soothe and relieve the agitation and wanderings of Alzheimer's patients. Too bad we didn't know about this in the 60s. A second dispensary would have more benefits than you might expect besides a proven tax revenue for not only the city, but for all the citizens, valley locals, and the many out-of-town visitors that come to visit our special town.
Thank you, you're about 45 seconds over.
The time to proceed is now. Stop the monopoly. Compassion and kindness have their rewards.
Thank you very much. Do we have other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Tess Kofoid, and I am the VP of Marketing and Sales at Spark. To start, you know, we really focus on what the community needs, and we have, in various situations, brought in specific products for specific people when they have asked and when they have needed. When it comes to Sonoma, we are not opposed to growth. It really is that we're pro-timing. You've heard the numbers. Transactions are up, sales are down, and this is a statewide issue. Prices have compressed, while the cost of operating and taxes remain high. In a fragile market, stability is what keeps jobs safe, service strong, and the 4% share of our gross sales dependable, which, let's be honest, this is important for the city. What we're doing here in Sonoma, it's not just about the dollars, though, it is about the community. In addition to our givebacks, we have supported the tree lighting, the city party, you know, we sponsored the first Pride celebration, the list goes on and on. We love being a part of this community, and we want to be a successful, long-term, locally-owned business. The staff reports that there is a projected lift from a second dispensary, but based on state trends and the numbers we're seeing, in particular added to the fact that Petaluma is about to open some new dispensaries, we're not sure if that lift is actually going to happen. Santa Rosa shows that when licensing outpaces demand, doors closed. You know, the California cannabis market, simply put, isn't what anybody thought it was going to be. I know that local opponents think we've had plenty of time to get our footing, and I think any responsible operator in our position would be standing here asking for the same thing, which, simply put, is just thoughtful timing. Until the state kind of calms everything down, we just really need your support locally. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Hello?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nick Caston, I'm with Soulful. We're a Sonoma County-based dispensary. I was here in April of 2023, and I'm going to basically deliver the same message I did then, which is, we really want to come to Sonoma. We serve many of your residents in our other dispensaries, and we look forward to the day where that will happen. But the timing is really up to you, and we're not here to push. We're here to say, when you're ready, we're ready to be your second dispensary. I will say that competition, my background's in economics and business educationally, and competition does actually breed and increase demand. We operate in other jurisdictions where there's two dispensaries, in fact, in Sebastopol with Spark. And having multiple options does actually increase demand, increase interest, increase different ways of reaching out to customers, so I would not expect for you to see a zero-sum increase when you do make this decision. It will be a lift, but it's not going to be 100%. The statewide economics, the federal restrictions, like, it's a very real issue, and everything you're hearing about the difficulty, if you were to be proposing to go from a monopoly to an open market like Santa Rosa, I'd be here telling you that you're setting people up for failure. An oligopoly with two operators is certainly successful. You see it in Healdsburg, you see it in Sebastopol. It can work, and when you're ready to go there, we look forward to joining you.
Thank you. All right, and if we have no, do we have other public comment? Thank you.
Hi, David Iker, Loma Court. My wife Josette did go to Spark when they said they would get the products she wanted, and they said, yes, we'll get the product, but you had to buy a whole case. So one, you got the cost of the whole case, it would be exorbitant, and two is how long does that last? So anyway, they finally did negotiate, they said, we'll go ahead and sell you one. But, so not carrying the product that she needs, and she's now going to Santa Rosa. Anyway, with that said, you've already been delaying a second dispensary, and the city has lost hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax revenue. You have responsibility to the residents of Sonoma, and you're letting them down. And I want to know why, and the potential for revenue, it only, in the staff report, only included the 4% cannabis tax. It did not include the almost, just over 2% sales tax the city also gets for any sale of the product. So you, any, the numbers in the staff report increased those by 50%. A second dispenser also will bring, means more jobs overall, not fewer jobs, because you have a second dispensary. Yeah, Spark is claiming that, you know, they're struggling, you know, they don't want the competition, but they just opened another dispensary in another city that has eight other dispensaries. So it seems like, so I'm not, you know, quite sure why they're doing that, other than, you know, Spark is vertically integrated cannabis. They're the cultivator, a manufacturer, distributor, and have seven dispensaries. Spark does not have to make money on the dispensaries, because Spark can make money as the cultivator and the manufacturer. Maybe this is their business model, open as many dispensaries as possible and make money as the cultivator and manufacturer. So how long should a city financially support a business that's struggling, with the city losing tax dollars of maybe $100,000 a year or more? How much?
I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please.
Okay. And so if a seafood restaurant wanted open, but another seafood restaurant said, hey, I'm struggling, is the city okay to say, no, that second, you cannot open, because we are supporting the first dispensary, seafood restaurant? Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I distribute?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I'm John Lowe. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name's John Lowe. I own Lowe Dispensary at 27 Fremont Drive. We were recently awarded by the North Bay Bohemian Best New Dispensary of the North Bay 2025, and maintained a near-perfect reviews along with Spark, the city's only licensed dispensary. Sonoma already has a thriving trusted cannabis access. The staff report is clear, the statewide cannabis market is shrinking, retail sales are down, prices are falling, illicit markets still dominates. That reality calls for caution. Let me address the assumptions directly. Revenues, the 140,000 of tax revenues coming in assumes it's all new, in reality, sales will shift from Spark and Lowe. The real net will only be 35 grand, maybe not even that, barely covering the city's administrative costs. Residents already have robust access, Spark in the city, Lowe just outside the city. And I'll be opening in Glen Ellen in several months. We're waiting for the county ordinance stuff to go through, but that'll be open soon. We're working on it every day. Markets, the market stability, Santa Rosa's oversaturation shows what happens when there are too many shops. Out of more than 20 open shops, a few at most are going to survive there. You guys should know that these guys aren't really giving you the proper stats. Oversaturation means lower prices, reduced product quality, and less tax revenue for the business. Public demand, the pressure for another dispensary does not come from residents at all. It comes from a very vocal and aggressive professional activist group that has been slinging mud at Eric and now me for years now. They don't care for award-winning operators, they don't care about what Spark or what anyone does for the community, they don't care about our reviews or anything like that, they just have their spite and their intolerance and hate. Their animosity does not reflect the sentiment of Sonoma's community. I would, the council's original framework was cautious and balanced, and it has worked. You now have one sustainable city dispensary and one outside the city limits that represents us well, pleasing not to stabilize a fragile compliant businesses to satisfy a handful of activists. I have a family I'm trying to raise, and there's a good business here you guys should be supporting. Thank you. Please do not do the RFP. Thank you.
Good evening. Gil Latimer, Sonoma, Sonoma Valley Cannabis Group. We are here tonight to represent the many residents who cannot be here but deserve competitive cannabis access. You lightly hear from folks defending their paychecks, that's understandable. But we're here defending principles: fair competition, consumer choice, and democratic governance free from regulatory capture. The promise of a second dispensary has not been realized in the four years since the ordinance was changed. Meanwhile, our community suffers under a system where patients aren't able to access products that an additional outlet might provide. Our group has provided the city council with much data and evidence in support of a second dispensary. The facts are undeniable. California's cannabis market is growing, consumption is up across all categories, and state data confirms that an increase in retail locations decreases the black market and improves public safety. A second dispensary means jobs, tax, revenue, and competitive pricing. The current artificial scarcity exists nowhere else in the city's regulatory framework. No caps on restaurants, coffee shops, or other businesses. Only cannabis faces this selective restriction designed to protect monopoly profits. Tonight, you may hear many voices defending the status quo, but remember, those voices represent private interests, not necessarily the public good. We represent the community interest in fair markets, competitive choice, and government that serves citizens. The solution is clear, the benefits are documented, and the time for delay has passed. By releasing the RFP, you honor the city's council's promises and serve your community, not special interests. The choice is yours, let it be for democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, seen no additional public comment. I will just give it a second. I am going to bring it back to the council for discussion and any additional questions that you might have. Yes, Councilmember D.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the, yeah, I still remember, and two years ago, and we had a segment issue, and at that time, I still remember, and we taken six months, and then come back to review. So the more time we spent and also cleared the picture, we made that. And the early, last minute a month, I got a chance to review and Sparks and the financial and the statement. Before that, I was wondering, I said, wow, that is the maybe, that is the gotten more profit, because two years ago, I was wondering and also concerned, and the, you know, the financials. Unfortunately, when I look at it, and item by item, although I'm happy to see they are compliant for filing and paying for our cities in the year, we just mentioned, not $271,000, but I look at the bottom line, that is the, you know, negative, you know, still not gotten approved. So the, this is the minor concern, on the local government, and the share to create or help and create, you know, fear and freeing the market, and with fear and competition within each and providers, product providers and the service providers. So the, here I have a question, because when I talk with the community, and I was told, you know, these kind of numbers could be audited or not audited, this one, I'm not sure, you know, maybe we can go back, look at our original agreement with the dispensary store, and also if a possible audit or not audit, what kind of the procedures, who pay that in the audit fees, and we need to find out. Basically, here, the questionable item, that is the cost of a good sold, you know, because according to my understanding, Spark, they have cultivations and manufacturing and distribution wholesale, and also in the retail store, that is Spark. I'm not wondering, and how much and Spark, the purchase from their own products, because this kind of a price could be, you know, decided by yourself. That is the only thing I concern. If anybody from the Spark can tell me what kind of percentage for your products as a sale, you manufactured by yourself, do you have any numbers, or later, maybe you can give me later? If you have it right now, yeah, please.
I'll allow that to respond.
Typically, our vertical products are about 12 to 13% of our overall sales.
All right, thank you. So that is the only thing I in a concern, and then I want to leave our colleagues to make more comments.
Do we have other comments? Yes. Councilwoman Lowe.
So the last time we had this conversation, it was based on the fact that it was one of our goals that was established. I believe you were the mayor, Mr. Gurney, and so that became, it was on the list to deal with, and we did, and there was no action taken. Then it was through that discussion that people reminded us, hey, but you said you'd bring it back, and, you know, fair enough, and we want to be, you know, true to our word, we're bringing it back. But my feeling is, we have to really look at what our policies are. And because last time, it was based on a goal that we had, we had set as a council, and it is not on the goals at the moment. So I would suggest that if it comes up on the next goal setting, that we look at it, I think that's a worthy goal. I mean, it, you know, there's a lot of other goals, but, you know, that could happen. And in that case, I think we'd have to also take a good look at what our policy is, because having looked back, and I was not on the council when the initial thing took place, it was not what you'd call the most elegant a process I have ever seen or heard of in my life, and I would not want to do another RFP under those particular guidelines, because I don't think they served this community well. It initiated a lot of dispute and so forth. So you guys can just Google it. So I think that's kind of the process, the way I see it. It's not, I'm not saying yes, I'm not saying no. I hear the benefits of a free market. I also hear the benefits of letting something, you know, mature and get a toehold and sustain before we move on. I think all of those arguments are valid, quite honestly. But I wouldn't want to go forward at this point without it being a goal from the council, and if it were a goal from the council, I think the first step is to relook at our policies. And I don't think we are prepared at this point to ask for an RFP based on the policies we currently have. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Gurney.
Ah, yes, the Wayback Machine. Well, I too was not part of the council that made the decisions around this, and who knows what the decision would have been had I been. I remember specifically that we were doing goal setting, and I raised the question, what is the deal with the cannabis, second dispensary? And I suggested that we have a conversation about that. That's how it got onto the goal. And then we had interim city manager at the time, and subsequently, we hired David, and, you know, I think he's perfectly aware that that had been hanging out there. The cannabis, local cannabis folks have come to the meeting a couple of times requesting that we look at this again, and lo and behold, here we are, looking at it again. The previous conversation that the council had, that I will use the term, kick the can down the road, was disappointing at that time for me. I would have liked a clear decision to have been made, but it wasn't. And so we're back here again tonight for what may or may not be a clear decision. But I don't, I have to leave town to go do a lot of things that I wish was here. Having multiple cannabis dispensaries, not high on my list of concerns, quite honestly. And so I think about, what do, what do I want this community to look like and to be? And so I start weighing, what kinds of community development do we have? And I don't know that we're talking about the kinds of dollars that can justify multiple cannabis stores, especially when there's potentially two other ones within, I don't know, 10 miles of the city limits that are available for customers. So I, I think that we certainly owe it to the city manager to give direction tonight in terms of what we do. And quite honestly, I don't support a second cannabis store. And so it'll be interesting to see what that direction actually looks like, and I will wrap it up there.
Councilmember Wellader.
I will repeat, too, I was not party to the original request in the process for cannabis, and like my colleague, I'm not sure what stance I would have taken at that point in time, but I'm now where I'm at, and the situation is before us. And I've given a lot of thought to it, and I guess initially, I do not feel compelled at this point that a town of 10,730 needs a second dispensary. And there is no dispensary right now in the Springs, and if I'm not mistaken, the population in the Springs exceeds that of the city. If there is a lack of sources, it seems logical that this request of a second dispensary in the area be directed to the county. Individual decisions to not buy from X dispensary because this person owns it, or not buy from Y dispensary because this other person owns it, it's not on me. These are personal choices made by individuals who have the freedom to make such choices. So I, I look out there in the landscape, and I see two operating dispensaries within four miles of each other, a third one pending. within four miles of each other, a third one pending, new dispensaries coming into Petaluma, and established in Santa Rosa, Sebastopol, Healdsburg. I do not support a second dispensary at this point in time. I do not support directing staff to spend time to revisit, review, revise, put forth, because in reality, I do not see a second dispensary as a priority. The priorities that I remember are updating the general plan, housing, we're continuing to get pressure from housing from the state. We need to stay focused on that. I'm passionate about the Plaza Sustainability. Those are things that, right now, I would like to direct our staff to focus on. And to, and I am reminded frequently that we have limited staff. So I want that limited staff to stay focused on what I think the priorities really are. And I would like to at least throw out there that, well, I will prephrase that. I do not support staff spending time on this topic at minimum of two years, just from a timeline standpoint, so that, you know, we're not kicking the can down, we're making a decision, this is it, we'll go from there, or not. And, you know, again, I wasn't part of the original agreements, where they wanted three or four, whether it was a brick and mortar, delivery, testing, manufacturing. But again, I can only react now to what's in front of me. And what is in front of me, I do not support a second cannabis dispensary now.
Well, I will say that I'm very glad that other people have a much better memory in their time machine than I do. But then I may have the oldest time machine here on the dais, so that may play a role in it. So I would say for me, the biggest issue is, I think, the issue of timing and resources. And I don't think you can compare this to the wine industry or restaurants, because we are a tourist economy. And we, those businesses attract people coming into Sonoma from outside the area. And dispensaries do not necessarily attract tourists unless, you know, you're there and you haven't, we live in a state where it's legal. So unless you've flown in from out of state, and that you're looking for someplace to get your gummies so that you can go to sleep at night, and you didn't want to travel with them or whatever. But it's not the same. It's not the same level. It's not a tourist attraction. So I don't think we can compare, you know, like having one or two. And I do think it is about, do we want a dispensary at all? We want to make sure, because I do think we do want one. And I think we need to have a dispensary here for people that's easily accessible for people in Sonoma. But I, we want to make sure that that goes well. And that two could be detrimental to both of them, and not just one of them. So I don't think it's an issue about one particular dispensary and their economic needs. It's about kind of overlooking, all looking at what can a community of this size actually support. And I don't think we're there. I don't think we're there yet. And there are places people can travel to. So my position is the timing position. I actually don't know exactly what that timing is. And I don't want to say, you know, like, well, we wouldn't revisit for two years. I think people can come when we set our next goals and ask us if we will make it a goal. And then we can decide from a priority basis, once again, whether it's on our list of priorities, you know. And if it doesn't get on the priorities, it doesn't. So for me, I have my list, housing, climate, protecting our immigrant community. Those are things that are facing us today that we have to be dealing with, that are existential threats for us, that we have to really be paying attention to. And that is where I would like to see staff focusing their energy. And it may not sound like it's a lot to do the work, to do a new policy and upgrade and do the RFP. But the thing is, we have actually quite good staff that's very thorough and would do a very thorough job. And so it would distract time, especially the RFP process. And I don't think we even know whether it would be an RFP or a lottery, and having that discussion, what would be the best way to actually go through getting a new, I think it would take, it would take more time than one would think. So my position also would be that we are not directing staff to move forward on RFP or on looking at the policy until it has become a priority for us. So, any other comments? So I would like to ask if we have a motion?
Okay, let's see here. I'd like to make a motion to not issue an RFP at this time for any cannabis business types providing staff with guidance as to when this item would be brought back. I suspect that indefinitely suspend this until such time that it comes back through a goal-setting process.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
I'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willander?
Yes.
Councilmember Ding?
Aye.
Mayor Farah Rivas?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So moving on to item 9.3. And this is to adopt a resolution approving the City of Sonoma responses to the Sonoma County Civil Grand Jury 2025 reports titled, Animal Services in Sonoma County: Separate and Not Equal, and Who Can Afford to Live in Sonoma County: A Tale of Two Cities, authorizing the mayor to sign and sign the required response forms and any other required actions. And so I am going to turn this over to our city manager, David Guin.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. This item is related to the Civil Grand Jury, as you mentioned before. The Civil Grand Jury is an independent body of citizens, citizen volunteers that are, every year, identify and investigate government operations throughout the county. They've identified two this year that Sonoma is tangentially related to. And so I'm going to quickly go over what those are. The first one is the animal services throughout Sonoma County. The Civil Grand Jury looked at the process, the decentralization of animal services within the county, and the gaps in service that that causes. Within the city, within the county, the multiple cities in the county all take different approaches to animal services. Here in Sonoma, we utilize our police department and Pets Lifeline to provide those services. Other cities do it differently. The responses that we provided, that we were required to respond to in this report, essentially boil down to participating in a countywide effort to talk about how consolidation could work, where we could share ideas and approaches, and then with the goal of ensuring that more pets are licensed and follow through. So that's, that would be outreach on our part, coordinating messages, but then also meeting with the county on the countywide effort, if they pull that meeting together. The comments that we provided for you to review and approve tonight essentially support that, that we will participate in those meetings, and we will participate in a coordinated effort. The second grand jury report was around affordable housing and targeting strategies for encouraging affordable housing. The city was not listed as one of those cities to respond to this item. We were offered the opportunity to respond if we wanted to to one of the items. And that was essentially coordinating our efforts and communication on affordable housing. We decided to respond and provide a response. We think it's important to show that we do currently work city-countywide with all the other cities and the county on affordable housing. We feel it's important that we're coordinating those efforts. We also want to, we also feel that it's important that we utilize our existing organizations that are on the forefront of this initiative and not lose sight of those, all the work that they've done to date. So we've identified those individuals as well in this, in our response. And so we provided those to you in the, in the report. All the responses are listed in the staff report. And the attachments are set up to where the mayor can sign those. If it's approved tonight, the mayor would sign, and we would send those off tomorrow. And then those would be published with the rest of the responses from all the other cities. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Yes. Vice Mayor Willander.
Two questions. First question is, if we were not, quote, found guilty, but we were lumped in with everybody else, why are we obligated to respond?
Yeah, two different reasons. One, for the first one, animal services.
Yes.
They, there is one organization that supports multiple cities in the county that does not work with us, that they're focusing on.
Right.
So the outcome of that, the areas that we're responding to are specific to pulling together all the cities in the county to work together to try to find ways we can work consistently across the county. So we needed to respond and say, are we willing to do that or not? And my response was, we're willing to participate in a meeting and have those discussions if the county pulls that meeting together.
And I can appreciate that. I guess I want to, I don't want to be hypocritical. We just suggested not going forth with something because it was going to take more staff time. And we wanted the staff to stay focused on our priorities. And certainly, the second part of the grand jury report having to do with housing, I suppose we could kind of slip into think any more time that is spent now collaborating would be justified. So that's the question I simply raised, that if we weren't guilty, and yes, it's easier to comply and say, yeah, we'd be part of it. But once again, if it's going to take a lot of staff time, it's hard for me to warm up to it.
Yeah. And I think both, two things. One, on the animal services, it's something we have to do anyway. We do need to do outreach. We do need to put information about animal licensing. It's something that our PIO assists with. The police department leads that effort. More than likely, it would probably be the police department, the sheriff's department that is heavily involved in this, that participates and provides guidance on that. All the city managers will discuss and talk, as we normally do, about things and how we coordinate. On the affordable housing side, it's something that we're doing already. Jennifer takes the lead on this and works countywide. And that's really important that we participate in those meetings. So it's something that we're already doing. We just wanted to use this opportunity to reiterate that, that it's important. We are there, and we're going to work together.
Thank you.
And as a point of order, it's a civil grand jury, so there's no finding of guilt related to this report.
Fine.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Gurney?
Just for the vice mayor, if we didn't respond to these things, then it's possible we'd become the subject of a grand jury investigation, so.
Okay. Any other questions? I look like we're good. Do I have a motion?
I want to speak up, because I've been so silent on motions, and I want to see if I could pull this one off.
Oh, good. Oh, yay. Practice, practice, practice.
I would like to make a motion that we recommend to staff that the council approve the draft responses and authorize our mayor to sign and submit the required forms by the statutory deadline.
Excuse me, we didn't have public comments. Sorry. So let me just do it anyway. Does anybody, Nick, you like animals. No, here we go. And turkeys did come up tonight, so. Okay, so in regards to, does anybody have any public comment? See none? The ladies in the back have been particularly quiet tonight. So now, do I have a motion?
Where was I before I was rudely interrupted? I don't know. I'll try it again. I make a motion that we, back up here, we recommend that the council approve, recommend that we approve the draft responses and authorize our mayor to sign and submit the required forms by the statutory deadline of tomorrow to ensure compliance and demonstrate the city's commitment to regional collaboration on both animal services and affordable housing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed. Very good. And now we're going to go to one of our agenda items that I think people always appreciate. I won't say it's a favorite one, since there's no second public comment. Adjournment.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.